Go live. Okay, here we go. So welcome back everyone to another town hall. I hope everyone's had a good week. Uh, I'm gonna try to move pretty quickly through this and that should be-
No, I haven't done my thing.
Well, I was just gonna say, this should be pretty quick because I have done nothing on this list. And if you haven't either, I think skip this entirely this week. Cause we've all been busier than heck. So uh, and I know Adam did his, but we are still waiting for a response. He's tried a couple of times to reach out to Brent, but we're still trying to um, get an answer on that stuff. But the rest of these are just on hold. So let's just move on. Enable metrics. Okay. Thank you so much, Rick. I hope you're doing well out there if you're hearing this. Um, and I hope you're back with us soon. And uh, nothing big change in here right now. Everything's looking good. Healthy fund and the healthy balance in the able fund. And I I wanna leave as much time for discussion today as I can. So I'm gonna move on. Um, Sarah, if you do have a chance-
There are, I did put posts from the hub this week in there. So if you um, refresh it, maybe they'll show up.
Well, it shouldn't need a refresh. I should be seeing everything in real time. And I'm, I'm wrong. You're right. There it is. I uh, that's fair. Never seen that before. That's interesting. Thank you so much, Sarah. Here we go. Luisa Venezuela. I'm gonna try to move a little quickly on these because like I said, we do have some things I wanna talk about, but let's see if I can digest what's going on here quickly. Um. So Luis recently our school bought a three D printer. I wanna start making enable designs already printed with Phoenix hand. Have a twelve year old who needs this model, but when we scale the arm won't fit on our printing bed. Okay, um. So Adam, sounds like you're after great stuff. Jeremy or someone really nice. Some people might be able to point in the right direction. Okay. So uh, is it, are we mainly talking about the size of the parts on their printer and how to split them? We had somebody else with a similar question? I'm trying to skim here. So if anyone's read this, help me out. Okay. So thank you, Adam. Keep you posted. Largest part. Okay, here you go. So Chris is saying the largest part is uh, can be printed in two parts using a clever comb design. There are references to it somewhere on here. Okay, so it sounds like somebody's already done that sort of, I think he's talking about that sort of uh, dovetail sort of interlocking version. Um, and I think I mentioned this last time that I found this stuff called three D group, which uh, I have not tried, but my brother just got some and he's been very impressed with it. Uh, when, I mean, uh, I I showed this last time, but you know, that I think that that little animation there shows it all. So that might be something that could help when it comes to, you know, connecting these, these parts. If you need to print it in multiple pieces. So I'll just throw that back out there again. Um. Let me get back to the, where's my hub page? Here we go. Um, ah, there's the STL file that I created and used. So they shared the um, the split version. Let's see if we can pull it up real quick. Um, okay. And here's a thingy verse link. Ah, there we go. Okay. Forearm joint for unlimited arm. Now that's interesting. That that actually wasn't the part I was expecting, but that's the biggest part. Okay. Okay. Um. Well, great. I mean, I I can't tell from looking at this if that would solve the problem that was reported or not. But if it does, great. Um, but that's the general idea, I think, is split the part. Um, and if if even if that part didn't exist, um, again, I I think, and I haven't confirmed this for myself, but I suspect that if you just did a a straight cut, which you can do in all kinds of free software programs out there. You don't even need to get into CAD. There are mesh editing tools that you can just do a a planer cut. And if you just cut down the middle on a part and split it into two pieces and then use that three D group stuff to bond them back on that flat surface. I can't help but wonder if that would be every bit as strong as the rest of the part. I think it would break elsewhere, or it would break on the seam. So uh, just something else to think about. Um, if if another part needs to be split.
So maker says collect the boy of work, Marie, whatever it is, um, seems to feel that they've gotten the help they needed. So the hub has worked. You can move on, but Sarah, you might just leave them a note mentioning that we discussed and endorsed this during our town hall meeting.
Terrific. I'll move to the next one. Uh, Adi or Addie? I don't know how to pronounce that. Having trouble with the V three Phoenix printed everything out. I'm assembled everything fine. And it came to the tensioner blocks and pins. The block slides in the arm guard well, but the pins won't go in properly. It's very resistant. I've run into this too. And this, this usually has to do with uh, with with printer tolerances. Uh, but that is something that we might even want to adjust to. I've noticed this also sometimes that the uh, exactly the same thing. Either the pins can be a little bit tight sometimes, or the block itself trying to slide it onto the the back of the cuff piece that goes over the forearm uh, can also be a little bit tight at times. You can fix that pretty easily easily with a little bit of post processing, you know, a little bit of sanding on the sides of the pins, just to shave down the sides a bit. Um, same thing with that block. If you need to to get it in just a little bit of of uh, you know, sanding or or otherwise to just, just, you know, loosen it up a little bit. But if you're aware, once you're aware of that, that like, hey, you know, my experience with this particular printer is that those pieces are tight. The next time you print them, I would suggest just scaling the the tensioner block up by a couple of percent. That will help it to slide on, excuse me, that will help it to slide on more easily. And it will also help the pins to fit in more easily because that that opens up those square holes a little bit where they fit into. So if you just, and we might want, if 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 we do some further testing in the community, that might be something that would be worth changing in the sort of the the primary design. I mean, we might wanna go ahead and scale up just that tensioner block piece by one or two percent. And and put, you know, update the actual thingy verse files with that so that people don't run into this again. Um, I would actually be really interested in having others test that and see if we're seeing consistent results on that. But that's how you can fix it as a workaround until we get to that point. You can just scale up that block piece by one or two percent. And I'm guessing that that's sort of what people are saying here. Yeah. Uh, screws won't uh, screw into the tensioner block properly. Uh, yeah, screws, if, you know, because the Phoenix is not a parametric design, meaning that when you scale it up or down, everything scales up or down, including the screw holes. We can never be guaranteed that the screw holes are going to end up at a size that's a good fit for the discrete sizes of screws that are available. So you may find that your screws are, you know, one size of screw is a little bit too big and the next size down is a little too small. In that case, what I've done is just use a drill, you know, of of appropriate size so that you can just enlarge the hole just a tiny bit so that that you know, that next step up screw will will fit in there just fine. You just want the the threads of the screw to be able to bite into the plastic a little bit. But you know, not so much that it's gonna break on the way in. Anyone else? Yeah.
Yeah, th- this is, this is sort of like a, an overarching question. I'm not specific to this. Um, but we we talked a little bit about how to videos.
Um, I'm sorry about what?
About how to videos and and, you know, tutorials on the site.
Yes.
A couple of weeks ago. Um, do we have like uh, at at the very least, like a running list of like common issues that people will run into when printing hands specifically, things that might be unique?
Probably, probably nothing that is been updated in probably eight or nine years. And it's, it's an excellent idea. Um, it's an excellent idea. I mean, I've done videos, including a full assembly tutorial for the Phoenix, but the kinds of things I just talked about, I did not talk about in that video. So that's an excellent idea.
Yeah, I I think a good starting point for that, if that were a project we wanted to tackle in twenty twenty-three, with just having like some kind of like resource library or learning hub. Um, would be just collecting and for, you know, kind of combing through the hub, the the forum. And uh, looking for questions that people tend to be asking or searching for those rather.
Collection of how to videos and documentation about common issues and or challenges.
Look at Trello being useful again.
To enable devices. Heck, yeah, we're gonna, this, we're just getting started with Trello. That's, we'll, we'll talk about that. Okay. Um, I think we can move on, right? Good. Okay. Next one up here is Isaac, also about a Phoenix hand.
Yes.
I'm printing the Phoenix V three hands for my bar mitzvah project. I'm having trouble with the bridging on the palm, even with supports. It comes out really bad. Okay. Well, so basically the answer is that's no problem. Don't worry about it. Don't let that bother you. Um, because number one, you you know, that's just kinda how printers work. Now, first of all, a lot of this has to do with the calibration of the printer and the materials and the settings are being used. And I would be happy to work with this person to talk about settings that you can use to improve this. And it's a met with through some tweaking optimization, you can get this to look a little bit better. But it's always, even the best printer, it's always gonna look a little messy on that underside. And it's okay. Clean it up the best you can with a tool, you know, you can, you can scrape at it. You can, you can use sandpaper. You can use whatever to just kind of clean up the the messy parts a little bit. But ultimately, but when this hand is assembled before it's given to somebody, there's adhesive foam padding that's going to cover that entire interior cavity. And it's gonna cover up all that stuff anyway. You're never gonna see it. You're never gonna feel it. So it's really not a big deal. Um, that's just inherent in the nature of how three D printers work. Like I said, there are ways to get a better uh, result than that. Hang on one second, guys, cause I have one here. I can show. Talk amongst yourselves for one second.
We are.
Okay, so I-
Talking among ourselves.
I happen to have just, I'm gonna stop my screen for sure for one second. I mean, I just printed one for a uh, a teacher and I, this was printed on a um, uh, an, an eight thousand dollar three D printer. It's a very high end three D printer. It's a nice looking print. As you can see, real nice quality, everything printed great. But look at the, look at the inside. I don't know if I can get the light in there, but look at how much mess I have in there. That's just the way they print. I will clean that up, no problem, in exactly the ways that I shared with you guys. But that's just how they print, and it's not a problem. Anyone else have comments here? Okay, let's move on. Uh, another Phoenix in question. Wow. All right. Uh, Jesus. Uh, excited to be entering my school, become a new enabled chapter. Hope you do some good, I'm currently testing the ropes of Phoenix V two, and it's coming out great, and it looks great. So this was just a show and tell. Thank you.
Probably wanna share your screen, Jeremy.
Oh, darn it. I'm sorry, guys. I was just showing this beautiful hand. Look at that. So thank you for sharing, Jesus. It looks like you've done a wonderful job. Uh, please do submit this if you haven't already through our badging system. Just go up here on the hub to badges. You'll go down to the maker section here. You'll select Phoenix V two. And you'll click on claim this badge and fill out the form with uh, the evidence that it's asking for down here. We'll get you a badge. And uh, it it looks great to me though. Looks like they did a, let me go back to it real quick. Looks like they did a nice job. The only thing I would uh, call attention to maybe is the angle. This is an important thing, and and it's a very common issue with new members of our community. This is assembled a little bit uh, flat. In other words, the the plane of the, if you think about the plane of the base of the palm, it's pretty well parallel with the forearm piece. And we really want there to be an angle of maybe about thirty-five degrees or so between those two, so that when you're wearing this device, your sort of natural resting position is just how it is with, you know, with your own hand. You know, we don't, you know, it's, our hand isn't like this naturally. It's it's, you know, kinda rested a a bit of an angle. And so we want, when they have to bend to act, actuate the device, we don't want them to have to come from this position and and bend way down where it's uncomfortable. We want them to be able to come from a comfortable position to be able to come down within a range that's comfortable. So we want that, all you have to do is ten uh, tighten up those uh, non flexible accords a little bit on each one of them. Until you have the the sort of a natural resting position of the device where the, the the cuff, the forearm piece is inclined a bit. Uh, like I said, about thirty, thirty-five degrees, and that will work better and be more comfortable for the user. Anyone else have any comments on this? Okay. Moving on.
Well done.
Clueless outreach. Interesting. The clueless. Okay, I don't know what this is.
Robotics competition team.
Oh, okay. The clueless, number one, one, two, one, two FT. Oh, robotics team. Okay. Such a cool name. Uh, San Diego.
They're too young to be referencing the movie. I don't know what it's referencing specifically.
Okay, all right. That's great. A team of fourteen students love to build robots, help others through STEM. Part of this effort, uh, meeting up with service projects, wondering if we can help fabricate and assemble three D printed prosthetics. Great. Okay. Uh, willing to cover any associated costs and assemble a device ourselves, um, or if there are alternate ways to support your project, which I'm sure there are. We've also done similar projects before during the pandemic. We made and donated a bunch of PPE. Great. Great. Okay. So Adam, wonderful. Already jumped in here. Well, you've already read this and responded. Why don't you take this one, Adam?
Uh, yeah, I I um, provided a pretty lengthy response because I was still hopped up on all the things we had discussed last week. Um, but uh, it sounds like a pretty motivated group. I checked out their website. Um, it looks like it's a a standing team that cycles students through. Uh, is the impression that I'm getting. So it's like, it it's, it's at this high school and uh, they have a a certain number of spots in the team each year. Um, they uh, seem to be pretty darn skilled on the robotics side. So I directed them to the bionic space. Uh, they were interested in uh, learning more generally about the enable. I directed them to the town hall recordings. They're not able to join the town halls because of conflicts with their schoolwork. Um, but uh, I also directed them to some of our targeted relief efforts, the uh, European um, uh, aid space, the John's uh, setup. And the Afghanistan initiative provided some general information there. Um, but that, that's about it. Uh, but they seem like a really good group of kids and uh, pretty motivated to uh, to offer assistance.
That is just wonderful. And I I gotta say, I I wish we had a mechanism to provide this kind of a welcome to everybody that comes into our community and to provide this kind of of guidance and everything. There's no way a single person like Adam could do that. Um, or well, certainly Adam can't. Maybe another single person could, but I I just wanna call our attention to this as a great example of what we've talked about in terms of improving that onboarding experience and helping people to get where they need to go. Uh, this was really well done, Adam. Thank you.
Well, it was, you know, it it's great for them, but you're, you're right that when it's sporadic, it doesn't really help the community as a whole.
It doesn't, it doesn't scale well. Yeah. So, okay.
Sometime soon chat.
Chat GPT may be part of that. You're absolutely right. I couldn't agree more. Um, and Adam, you and I gotta circle background on that. I owe you a response to an email.
That, that's kinda what I was thinking with the API that they release.
Absolutely. So I, I, and I already actually reached out to a friend of mine who is an exceptionally good developer, my previous business partner, and and just kinda gauged if he had any interest, cause we've talked recently about development opportunities around chat GPT. And and so I I kinda just put a feeler out to see if this might be something he'd be able to to help with. And unfortunately, he's not gonna have bandwidth. Um, but just so that you know, I I, you know, I have been thinking a lot about that and already put, put some feelers out there.
I think there, there are a lot of companies that it like in the last week have released their own, like uh, shoot, like Grammarly, Duolingo. All of these uh, these apps are integrating some kind of, if not chat, uh, chat GPT powered, some uh, large language model.
That's right.
Integration. And I I think i- at the very worst, just kind of looking around at what's out there now to to steal some ideas. But might be a good way to start.
Couldn't agree more. Um, I'm trying to think, how do I drop that down here? I guess maybe AI assisted.
Um, welcome bot.
Uh, say that again, Adam?
Welcome bot.
Ah, welcome bot. Nice. Uh, to help people find what they need. Okay, yes, I'd love to keep talking.
Yeah, I think it would be great if people joined the hub and it said, hey, what kinda, like, how, how do you want to help? And then started to direct and in the right direction.
That, that really, I, we're gonna, we're gonna make that work. That one is exciting to me. We're gonna talk about it. Okay. Um, all right. So upcoming meetings, uh, I didn't even have a chance to look at this. What's our next one, folks? Uh, do we have any? Oh, wait, we have March events. I just didn't put the link in. I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, Wiki. Oh, here, this month. Oh, did, we probably didn't update this, right? Yeah. So I probably haven't shown you this, but see this over here. I actually have it in the menu, Sarah, this month's enable meetings, which is just a copy of what's down in the wiki to make it easier for people to find. So we'll wanna get in the habit of updating this as well, and I can show you how to do that. It's just it in, when you're in the main forum space, if you go to this, not the very top one up here, but this one here, the gear icon. And then you go to this custom pages here.
I, um, I published the documents in the
In the wiki. I understand. But if you come in here, then see where it says this month's enable meetings, and we edit this, this contains a link to that. That month's summary as well. So it's the same information that you're putting into the wiki. This is just so that it will also show up right here in the menu.
Okay, I can do that.
Um, and if you, if you forget, I went through that quickly. I'd be happy to show that to you later. Um, so let's just jump down here to the wiki, uh, events. Uh, there we go. Oh, and by the way, you can always reorder, see the little sandwich on the left here. We can always reorder these to make the order where we want. So here's March. Yeah, good fuck. Okay. So we've got, where are we? We're at the tenth. Uh, so on Monday, we have the chapter leaders meeting led by John. Anything special to report on that one, John? What do you plan to talk about?
Well, actually, no, actually, I'm gonna be in Ireland. I'm going to Dublin tonight. Yeah, uh, with my ninety-four year old mother. I'm going to be at the theater on Monday night. Um.
So what is, what is twelve PM EST and?
Six PM. I can probably do it. I'd be quite happy if someone else could fill my, my chair, but I'm probably okay.
Uh, trying to think if I could. I I might be able to if you can't find somebody else, John. Let me know.
Okay.
All right. Uh, the seventeenth then, which is next Friday, we've got the combined enable education and new member meetup led by uh, uh, well, I, I don't know. Is Rick still gonna be able to?
It will be just Ian.
Just Ian. Okay, great. So Ian will take the lead on this one. Um. I want, I should try to join that because I have it on my list to get updates from him about what we're doing with the NIH three D print exchange and our device catalog. Maybe that would be a good time to check in with him. Uh, okay. So we've got that on next Friday. Then we've got the following Friday, March twenty-fourth. We've got the bionic design group, and uh, this is led by Vivek, but we have a special guest, Sarah, this, this month. What, what's going on with that, Sarah?
Um, no, I'm, I'm not a, a guest.
Oh, that is contact, sir. Okay, I misunderstood. Okay, got it. If you have an, I see. So this is a call for uh, the guests for that. I I misunderstood. Um, okay. So we got the bionic team on the twenty-fourth, and then recurring Fridays, of course, these meetings here. So that's what's going on for March. All right. Now we can get into our discussion topics. All right. So we had a question that just came in today, which I already uh, copied. I I put a response in and included Adam, but I wanted to go through this today. Our new partners at the Illinois Assistant Technology Program sent me an email uh, saying, hey, we got this inquiry from an occupational therapist, and we'd really, you know, welcome any input from you guys before we respond. So the inquiry they got is, I'm an occupational therapist, working in Illinois, early intervention. Today I evaluated a little boy who's twenty-four months old. He was born without fingers on his left hand. Is it possible to find a device such as enable printed for such a young kid? Thanks. My preliminary response for, I'm just gonna share it with you and then we'll talk. Kathy, I'll bring this up in today's enable town hall meeting, starting in a short while. Uh, person I've always had, been a little hesitant to make devices for children that young. Their little bodies are still developing. I'm concerned about any kind of device possibly interfering with that natural growth. Maybe not a concern in this case, since the limb difference is congenital. I'm not sure. But my bigger concern has always been about the motivation for wanting a device and where that motivation is coming from. I would think that a twenty-eight month year old has no concept of there being anything wrong and feels no need for any kind of a device. It seems to me that it's more often the parents wanting to do something, so they feel like they're helping to fix some kind of perceived problem. You know, people don't like being seen as different. I'd prefer to make devices for people who themselves have come to the decision that they would enjoy having one, or that it might help them do things they're having trouble doing. And I doubt that's the case with a twenty-eight month old. Well, those are just my personal, non-professional views. I'll bring this up, et cetera, et cetera. So um, I'd like to ask Adam for his thoughts on this first, but of course, then I'd like to hear from everyone. If you're able to talk, Adam.
No, I am. I'm thinking, um. This, hmm. This is where I run into a wall where it's crossing the line from an organization that is providing assistance into something that feels more adjacent or directly in the sphere of healthcare.
Yes.
Um, and that's where, you know, these kinds of determinations are typically guided by some um, uh, uh, institutional philosophy, mission values, and and, you know, of course, state and federal guidelines. Um, uh, on, on the subject of, is it appropriate to supply a hand? Where is the motivation coming from? Generally, um, when I'm in a situation where I'm dealing with a pediatric patient, um, my number one source of data comes from the parent. Uh, if the uh, the child is, you know, pre-verbal or or non-verbal, then the, the caregiver is going to have the most insight into their kid's uh, capabilities and what they're interested in. Um, in this case, I give me a sec. Let me think. I think we are not providing a medical device. We're, we're filling a requested need, a stated need. Um, I think that we, if this is something that some member of our community would like to assist with, then I don't think there's any moral or um, legal quandary in simply providing a device, because as has been repeatedly stated, enable printed hands are not medical devices.
Agreed. And this is coming from an occupational therapist. Are you, are you at all surprised by this inquiry actually coming from an OT? Or is this very appropriate that they're the expert and and we should trust in their expertise and we're just here to help fabricate something?
Yeah, so, so um, limb compliance, wear compliance, uh, I should say use compliance uh, is exponentially higher the earlier you start. Um, so, so even if they're not functionally u- using the device, it is generally better to get them acclimated to having one so that uh, compliance down the line. Now, if it's something they really hate, um, they're, oh boy, uh, I hope I'm not getting myself in in hot water with this. There's something called ABA, which is a type of therapy where uh, you kind of force kids to do things or avoid doing behaviors that are undesirable. I am extremely against ABA. And some OTs incorporate ABA practices into uh, what they do. I'm not at all suggesting that's what this person is doing. It's pretty rare.
Yes.
Um, but I would just say that this is really not, th- this is not something that I would be concerned about simply handing a device over. But caveat, this is exactly why I think we need to be more closely integrated into the care team as our standard to practice.
And I would, I would add to that, the parenting and these medical, you know, the medical professional community as you're working on, I think both sides having a better connection with both is important. Wouldn't you agree?
Yeah, a hu- a hundred percent. I just, I think that whoever partners should have some conversations and just kinda let their own impression guide them. Um, I, I think we need to just remember, we are not healthcare providers. Um, and so th- those kinds of judgments need to fall to the care team. And if the care team is requesting assistance, then we can, I think, make that decision with a clear conscience. But again,
Very, very helpful.
We, we, we need to, I, I think that we, we need to make communication with a part of the care team central to the process of providing a hand, uh, in the cases where we continue doing that. Uh, because the fact that we do not, as a matter of course, is why the healthcare community um, is hesitant to partner with um, with an organization like ours.
Absolutely. Okay, John, I'd like to hear what your thoughts are.
Um, I, all of that is true, but we have also been advised by prosthetists that kids younger than three or four, the bones are soft. And so a concern would be that this kid actually uses this thing a lot. And might then potentially deal with some uh, malformation as a result of the device. So we have typically said at three or four, uh, until three or four years of age, they don't know that they ha- that they have an interesting condition. They're typically not concerned about this. Um, I think your point about acclimating them and giving them something to aspire to, the way you give a baby doll to a child, is a really good point. But I would
Well, I, John, don't, don't you think it's also in an, a, a, an important factor is whether or not a medical professional is involved too, right? Because if we have an occupational therapist, I would assume that part of the role of that occupational therapist is monitoring to make sure that there is not overuse to the point where
And a pediatric OT would be the person I would trust with this. And you know who happens to be both an enable community member and a pediatric OT and a maker? It's uh, Tyinar de los Santos Bina, uh, out of Brazil. Um, so she would be the person who I would think would be the best to uh, communicate with this OT, figure out what the kid's functional capacity is, and uh, potentially print the hand if she has.
That's a great idea. Uh, do you think she would mind if I looped her in by email on this discussion?
Not at all. I've, she, she has expressed repeatedly a desire to help however she can.
That is a great idea. I'm gonna put that down real quick so I don't forget. It's an action item.
Well, he's putting it down. I'll point out that you wanted to save time for big topics, and it's all, you only have twenty-five minutes left.
Uh, no, we're, we're already into the big topics. Uh, the, the, these first two are a big part of this. So um, thank you for the, the heads up though, John. I do tend to lose track of it. Um, okay. So anything else on this, Adam? Like, that was really helpful, and I, I think that gives us a clear path forward. Anything else?
No, that, this, this is something that, because I'm so far removed from the clinical scene, I re- I recognize that I have it in sight here generally, but I've been away from the literature for, you know, the better part of a decade.
You still have, you still have far more insights than we, so that, that helps.
Yeah, I, I just need to start reading up again.
Okay, terrific. Thank you so much. Um, let's move on to the next one. You said that you have a similar inquiry from the Missouri AT program. I don't know what the inquiry is, so tell us about this.
Yeah, so we've got a double amputee in northeastern Missouri, about an hour north of St. Louis, uh, who is an adult with uh, some developmental disabilities. Uh, so it's a kind of complex case. Uh, I believe there's also an OT involved there. Um, Scout Mary, who's the head of the Missouri Doctor Assistant Technology Program. Uh, and the, the, almost my neighbor, uh, as it turns out, um, is uh, uh, the, the gentleman who, who brought my attention to this case, or rather brought this case to my attention. Um, so this is a, a, a case in which, you know, I think somebody uh, with some skill. Um, so this is, uh, a case in which, you know, I think somebody, uh, with some skill, uh, would be really helpful. It's kind of unclear. He's doing a little bit of fact finding, a social worker who's involved, about what his current assets are. It sounds like he might have a couple of prostheses already, but I don't know what his capacity for using them are.
What kind of amputations are we talking about? Where?
I don't know whether they're transradial or transhumeral.
Okay.
But, but they're upper extremity.
Got it.
Uh, my, my impression with this kind of things typically, that it's going to be transradial, um, usually people will, uh, you know, higher an amputation, the more likely it is someone's going to be descriptive about where it is, I've found. Um, but, uh, yeah.
Makes sense.
I'm still waiting on, on some details.
And, and so are they, are they, have they approached you to say, is this a case you guys could help with? Is that the idea?
Yep, that's right. Yeah.
And, and where is the gentleman? He's in northeastern Missouri?
That's right.
Okay, um, and, uh, okay.
I don't know that there's anything really that, that needs to be decided right now. Scout is still getting a little bit of that baseline info once he.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I mean, it, it sounds like you need those, those, the basic case details, some photos, really see what we're dealing with. And then, yeah, I mean, let's, it sounds like it's a good opportunity to get some people plugged in. And, you know, there's always opportu- there's always interesting opportunities, kind of experiment with sort of team-based approaches on these things, and you could be in.
Right.
Part of guiding that, but you don't need to be the person making and assembling and all that.
Certainly can't, uh, so.
Oh, you could, you could, you could.
Well, uh, I, I just wanted to kind of bring it up. I, I directed him to, once he's got that information, uh, to hop on the hub and, uh, post it. And then potentially, if it looks like we've got some discussion, and it sounds like somebody's able to, uh, attach themselves to it to, uh, add that to the matching platform.
Wonderful. All right, terrific. Um, so I just, I captured this from our earlier discussion about an A I assisted welcome bot. Let's, uh, get into that some other time, but that's something I'd much like to work on, um, with you, Adam. And, uh, so the, the next topic up would be outreach, and I just left all of our notes in here from last time, in case any of them are useful. But I, I just felt like this was, this is really kind of one of our main areas.
Sure.
Focus on right now. Um, and so I, you know, use whatever time you want here, even if it's the rest of the meeting. We don't necessarily need to get into the rest of these things here, so.
Okay, um, I, I don't have a ton of, I, I've been on vacation for most of the week, uh, of the last week, so I haven't had a whole lot, uh, of developments. I did get, uh, an appointment scheduled with the Director of Makers Making Change.
Oh, great.
Whose office is up in, uh, Canadia up there. Um, so I'm really excited to meet with him, actually. His organization, uh, tha- that organization is just so, um, it, it's a nonprofit, uh, an N G O, um, and they have, uh, their structure is very similar to ours. Um, but they're primarily based in North America. Their scope is a little bit, uh, less expansive, but they are better funded. Um, so it's really interesting. We've got a small number of people who all appear to be on staff, um, who are just doing really interesting stuff with, with finding solutions to, uh, you know, producing assistive technology and just finding interesting solutions, uh, to sort of, uh, day-to-day problems for people with disabilities. It's, it's really fascinating.
That's really cool. And I, and I just wanna, I, it's a repeat, but I want to share what I shared last time, which is on our, our blog, that Makers Making Change is also the team that developed the freely available Assistive Device Academy, which is an online curriculum, fully STEM oriented, uh, and it's offered through Print Lab, and the links are here in my blog post. But this, this a full STEM-aligned curriculum for, uh, making assistive devices. It's, it's just a wonderful program, from what I can see, to really engage students in a, in a very meaningful way. And it's entirely free of charge to anybody. No, don't need to put in a credit card, nothing like that.
Yeah, it, it's pretty incredible. It, they're part of the Neil Squire Program, which I believe is like the parent NGO. Um, but they, uh, yeah, tha- they do all kinds of great work. And, um, yeah, I'm, I'm excited to meet with them to see if there are any people, uh, in their community who'd like to be more involved in the business of designing and making hands. And if there's anybody in Enable who'd like to, you know, partner, um, with Makers Making Change and start, you know, doing some of that work. Do it. I think there's some good collaboration, uh, that can come out of, uh, uh, some kind of relationship there. So.
You know, that particular call to action is worth, um, putting out in, uh, on social media and in the hub, that the course is available, and it would be really good for eh, enable people, a few enabled people to take it to increase cross-talk between these two allied organizations.
Yeah, you guys, you guys see how much, you guys see how much John and I think alike? He didn't notice that I just put that down as an action item for myself. So yes, I, I will, I agree a hundred percent to them.
Yeah, I think they also do a really good job of, um, uh, managing a social media presence. Um, so I think that if it were, uh, you know, I've got to have a conversation, uh, with, with the dude. But, um, I'm hoping that, you know, as a way to sort of kickstart some kind of social media campaign or establishing a TikTok account or something, um, that we might be able to kind of ride their coattails to get us started.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's a great idea. Um, there's, there's, you know, nothing wrong with, you know, riding on the coattails of somebody else's S E O and name recognition if we're supporting the same objectives.
Right.
All right. Anything else that you'd like to get into here, Adam?
Um, I've got a couple of other, uh, talks coming up. I'll be meeting with Ability K C at some point, either next week or the week after. I've got to pin down that time with the, uh, directors there, when they have availability. I'd like to do a site walkthrough and take some pictures of, uh, to give you all a better sense for what their facilities are, the kind of patients. They've got, um, three main, uh, 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 facilities that are all sort of located uh, in midtown Kansas City, uh, with a, i- i- it's, it's an interesting setup, and it's been a while since I've worked there, but it's really great. And from there, just as a reminder, my, my goal is to use Ability K C as a kind of test kitchen, see if we can start, uh, we can establish like a rehab engineering group, people who might be interested in providing more regular support to O Ts and developing. We have tools and also, uh, specific, uh, uh, you know, functional, single-use case, uh, tools for individual patients. Um, and also there's a lot of opportunity for like making games and things that O Ts would use to like build, uh, precision hand control and grip strength and all kinds of stuff that, that like, you know, things ranging from like simple fidget spinners to more complex puzzles and things that can be expensive materials that a nonprofit like Ability K C might have a hard time procuring, that we could potentially provide free of charge. So just, th- there's a, a huge array of things that can, that can come out of that. And then eventually, um, I'm hoping to establish a model that could be emulated, uh, across different rehab facilities, uh, across the country. So that's, that's kind of where I'm heading with that. Um.
It is, it is a, it is a grand vision, and I love it.
Yeah, we'll see. Um, the only other thing is, uh, I'll be meeting with the, uh, uh, National, um, Assistive Technology Group. Um, so they have their, their leadership town hall every month. Uh, and I will be, uh, talking briefly about what Enable is, uh, as a reminder, uh, to make sure that this is needed to be course corrected. My, uh, general vision here is to partner, uh, uh, each state's A T P with an Enable chapter who's interested in being the sort of Enable, uh, go-between to, to be the primary contact, uh, and fulfill their device requirement requests, uh, if they have the bandwidth. Um, so I, I think that there's an opportunity there to establish more of a, uh, uh, you know, an Enable standard, so that, uh, for these, uh, state-run organizations, uh, there is, uh, you know, there, there's a steady conduit um, for supplying devices as they, uh, as they're required.
That's a really good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else that we want to talk about right now on outreach and partnerships? Not, not that that wasn't enough.
I mean, Trello kind of falls under that a little bit. I don't know if there's any updates you have or want to discuss.
I don't, only because I think you and I have been in the same boat. Um, I know I haven't been able to put any attention on this other than just putting a card in, you know, minutes ago, but no, I, I, I think we need to kind of regroup. I showed you guys last time how we, we can, uh, embed it in the, uh, uh, this is visible only to admins right now, but we can.
Yeah, that's great.
Here in the hub. So I, I think it's just a matter of further thinking through how we use it. Do we want to use multiple boards and how, uh, so that they, you know, maybe show up and you don't have to do as much scrolling? And, uh, so I think we just have to think through the presentation and the usage scenarios and just a continuation of our last meeting and, um, and move forward on it. We just haven't, haven't had time to do that, but, um, I, I, I still think it's the right solution and, and we'll, we'll move forward on it.
Okay, um, two, hmm. I think I have two additional things. Uh, number one, speaking of Tyara down in Brazil, um, she had expressed an interest in, uh, facilitating, uh, healthcare group discussion. Um, assuming we get, um, more of healthcare community built up. Um, so I think that that would be something that would be well within her wheelhouse, uh, to moderate and organize. Um, we have a couple of additional details to hammer out, um, but that would be, uh, you know, something that I, I could lend a hand with every now and then.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's outside of my, my capacity at the moment.
Oh, no, I think, I think you'd be an important part of that, Adam. Not so much for the, you know, being, you know, one of the experts or anything, but as far as integration, um, in the community and connecting the dots and all that, that would be.
Yeah, I'm hoping, I'm, I'm hoping that as we, you know, this, this dovetails with my, um, CARF project, trying to reach out to rehab facilities, um, and get more O Ts in those facilities, uh, uh, you know, logged on as members of the hub and, uh, increasing awareness and having a space, you know, a place for them to actually be and do and discuss things. Um, like that would be a, a really great, um, uh, piece of bait.
Yeah.
So.
Absolutely.
Um, and then that, you know, could, maybe that turns into like, you know, meetups. And maybe that turns into like an Enable conference a couple of years down the line, um, and being a, you know, just trying to build things up one piece at a time.
That's really wonderful.
Oh, speaking of conferences, this is the last thing. This is that second thing. Um, I've got the A O T A next month. Uh, I am, uh, going to order, uh, business cards. I believe we discussed last week, um, uh, a, a, a small budget for getting trinkets and business cards printed. Um, uh, very happy to, uh, do that next week, but I, I think I'll need this at some time with you, Jeremy, to talk about, you know, what kinds of things might be good to print and bring along. Obviously, things that have Enable's logo and website on them, uh, but things that might be fun to.
Help me out. What, what is A O C A? I know it's not the Automotive Wheel Change Association.
Nope, that's it. I'm going to the Automotive Wheel Change Association meeting. Um, it's a, you know, I've been really nervous about it, but this is the year I finally take. No, it's the, um, it's the American Occupational Therapy Association Conference.
There we go.
A O T A.
A O T A, I misheard. Okay, there we go.
So there are a couple of, uh, trinkets that are, are quite nice. One is the Park Hands logo, which little kids find attractive. Um, and the other is actually a micro gripper thumb with a rubber band for the thumb moves. It's only about this big, um, which tells a nice story also. I think there may also be a non-moving little tiny, tiny hand that, these are things that you can put on keychains.
I actually haven't seen this one, an Enable wall key holder.
That's neat.
That's really neat. I never saw this one.
I like that a lot.
Um, but I was looking for the design that John was talking about, because there is a three D printable version of just this little kind of heart and hand thing as sort of a pendant. Um, I'll have to, we'll have to find it, but yeah, we, we have that as well. It's a great idea.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of printing that and there being a loop to like put onto a keychain. And then, you know, I, I can quickly assemble, I don't know, like, do those, um, and hand those out. Maybe in red.
Uh huh.
So do we, let's see, do not have Enable, um.
Do we, do, do we have a style guide? Do, I mean, do we have like?
God, no. I, we should. You're, you're on the right track, and we'll talk about that, but we have nothing even close to it. Um, we, we were, it, it was hard enough for us just to get as far as getting a logo that we could somewhat agree on, and I would love.
The logo is great.
I, I would love to revisit the, the whole style guide thing with you. I, I've always sort of tried to advocate for, um, consistency. I think it's important in terms, thinking of it in terms of branding, like even as far as how we punctuate Enable with lowercase e and the capitals, all the rest. I think being consistent is very important part of branding. And so I've always wanted to see more consistency in how we, we do all that stuff. But no, we've never gotten as far as coming up with any kind of a style guide. I'm not equipped to do that.
Yeah, well, me neither. Um, okay, cool. Um, that, that's it on my.
I have found a couple of files, which I will put in the chat in a minute.
Great.
Excellent. Okay. Uh, well, I don't think I have anything else that's important enough to talk about, but I want to try to squeeze it into ten minutes here. So let me just ask if anyone would like to talk about anything or share anything that you've been up to before we wrap this meeting up. Hi, Ward. Didn't see when you joined in there. Hello.
Hey, how we doing?
Doing great. Anybody have anything else, anything at all that you'd like to chat about? Okay, well, then I'll let you go a little bit early and, uh, see you all next time.
All right.
Have a great week, all.
I'll mail you the link when I refine it.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thanks, John.
Uh, thank you all. I, I just want to say, between the three of you, we're doing great here. You're really, we're really keeping the whole thing going. It's great.
Really, it's really wonderful to see somebody doing the kind of stuff that we had been doing for so many years, John. It's, uh, thank you, Sarah. We already lost Adam, but Sarah, thanks so much for being a part of that.
Um, yeah, it's, it's great to be here. I think, and it's, um, Adam has done so much, so I.
Really has.
Yeah.
It's amazing to see. So I just, uh, really enjoy working with you guys. Look forward to more. See y'all.
See you later.